Board of County Commissioners is now back in session. Next on the agenda would be a public hearing for CDBG grant, 2017 application. Ms. Debra.
Okay. Well, it's time again to consider applying for a community development block grant. The closeout package for the last grant was submitted to DEO last month, and I know of nothing that would hold up the closeout. So, in that case, the county's eligible to reapply. This is the federal fiscal year 2017 application cycle. The county could get up to $700,000, same amount as last time. There are four grant categories that we need to make the public aware of. One of the categories is economic development. The county can apply for that at any time, as long as there's money still in the pot. Economic development funds can go toward job-producing or job-saving projects. The majority of the jobs have to be for low to moderate income people. And those funds are typically used for infrastructure needs, in which case it's a grant to the county. The county's on the hook for the business either providing or saving the jobs that are pledged. The other option is an actual loan to a business. And so, these are specific to a business. They're not like, let's build something to draw business. It's an actual funding award for a specific business coming in to do certain things. Last few years, because these are difficult to make them work and make them feasible, the state has not been getting a lot of applications. They've actually rolled the money into other cycles sometimes. But, you know, occasionally, there's a project that it fits. So, in addition to the other three categories, that is something that the county can apply for. The other three grant application categories, the applications are due on August 13th, and the county can choose one of the three. The first category I'll mention and knock it out of the way is commercial revitalization. They only fund enough usually for one, maybe two of those grants, highly competitive. They're really designed for downtown, commercial areas. The other two categories, and these are the ones that Franklin County has received in the past, are neighborhood revitalization and housing. We did a few neighborhood revitalization grants, did some stormwater drainage, some water and wastewater extension projects with East Point Utility, I mean, East Point Water and Sewer, so a little bit of paving like Twin Lakes Road, I believe. So, that's neighborhood infrastructure. A few years ago, we got to the point where we didn't see any really competitive projects out there, because you have to get your cost-benefit score high up on that. And so, like, for example, you probably need, I think the number is 78 low to moderate income households, in addition to any other household that would benefit. You've got to have high percentages of low to moderate income and very low income. So, we didn't find any projects that we thought would actually get funded, because it's very competitive. So, the other category is housing, and that's what we had last time. So, at this stage of the game, we are making the public aware of the fact that the county can choose one of these categories and apply. The neighborhood typically funds water, sewer, paving, and drainage. Those are your top four items in that category. Other things are eligible, but they just don't get funded, like neighborhood parks, things like that. Anything that the county spends the money on has to be in the unincorporated areas and has to benefit primarily low to moderate income people. It's a very, very competitive process. There is a points, match is not required, however, if you contribute $50,000 to the project, you will get points. In the neighborhood category, if you have your engineering already done ahead of time, you get points. So, what we did on the last one, the housing grant, we put $50,000 of ship funds into the project. Later in the process, we were able to pull them out. That was a unique year that they funded down pretty low onto the scoring list. They went down the list a little farther, because they had a little more money, but we never count on that. I always like to recommend that you get every point you can in the grant application process. So, the housing or neighborhood grant, you would want to put match in if you could. Try to make your score as high as possible for anything that you apply for. And so, we need to make the public aware of this and see if they have any public comments.
Calling for public comment. This is a public hearing. Any public comment, raise your hand, come forward, be recognized. No, there being no public comment?
Okay.
Or you need pleasure of the board as to what they want to apply for?
I would like to inform you that the Citizen Advisory Task Force met and recommended that the county do another housing application, and in that application, to commit $50,000 in ship funds.
Pleasure of the board.
Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Debbie, you know, this cycle was a good thing. It helped some people, but we've had discussions about mobile homes, houses. And I would just like to see maybe some of, something going on with the local contractors, maybe they, you know, to build houses instead of mobile homes or modular homes, because some of those is 78 to 100,000. That's too much money to put out on one place, you know? What we want to do is get the most for our dollars. So, you know, that's what I would like to do. I don't mind going out and doing another one like that, but I want us to change the criteria from it, from what we did this time, because we didn't serve as many people as what we could have served if we, you know, set a living.
When you're talking about homes, are you talking about rehabilitating, helping rehabilitate some of these homes?
No, like, we talked one time before, instead of doing the modular homes, build like the stick homes, like Mr. Lockley was talking about, Mr. Chairman, where you could just about do it as cheap as what you could a modular home. And it'd be two-fold, provide somebody a place to live and also, you know, employ the local contractors.
And Debbie, help me out here with the cost of some of these, the mobile homes, because they were in that special zoning.
Okay. We, in the last grant, now, again, deciding which category to apply for is a separate issue of the policy decision.
Oh, okay.
And you know that, I think, you know, it's a local policy, a lot of this stuff. So, but just to recap, from the last grant, we did a total of 10 homes, five were rehabilitations, five were replacements. They were all mobile homes. The board directed that we purchased mobile homes now, and two of the five were on Ridge Road, and those were in the about $78,000 range, and that included sewer connection fees to East Point Water and Sewer. It include abandoning the septic tank, that kind of thing, because those were, you know, there's a state law that says if you're within so many feet of a, you know, sewer line. So, we went ahead and got them in compliance as part of the process of replacing their home. So, those were single-wide, three-bedroom, two baths. And again, and that included the demolition of their existing homes, the setup, everything. And we did upgrade the specs on those homes a little bit for energy efficiency and durability a little bit. And they're wind zone three, of course. Now, the other two, no, I'm sorry, that was two. The other three of the five were in the exposure D range, and that's what got us, because you can't find a single wide in exposure D category. And so, there were double wides. One of them was in a floodplain. Two of them had homeowners who needed accessibility ramps, and so, our costs were very high on those, those three.
Can I ask a question? On a, can you build a home in the new location and waiting, the trailer there?
Yes. I mean, you can. I mean, now, you have to keep in mind that we have to hit the number of, total number of homes that we promised. We promised 10, that's what we delivered. We might, I will, I always like to promise the minimum, and, you know, you can always exceed it. So, our minimum this year would either be nine or 10, and we'll figure out, based on the new forms that the state is releasing now.
Well, it's like Commissioner Sanders said, a home, if you build a home for that amount, and you can, because you can get a contractor in there and he can, if one of them get to bid for two, he can build a house and do all that other stuff, what you were saying, and it could be stick build. Plus, it will last longer than a trailer.
Well, we, that was one of the things that we discussed last time, and I think the board's impression was that no one would do better with mobile homes.
We had that, we would.
Yeah.
It was better.
I'd actually suggest, I'd actually suggested by building mobile homes for the reasons you're talking about, plus the local construction industry. It may or may not be cheaper, but I would certainly be in favor of giving it a shot. You can always get bids, and if they don't turn out, you can go to Plan B, you know?
It can be, you're not going to build them, build them off, ain't like they going to get it themselves, or they going to have to take what you build.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
You go in and build a basic.
Well, I had a.
Build a basic coming on.
I had a plan for it.
You have to be careful when you're building homes, because you're talking about low to moderate income. When you build a home, now, somebody's got to start paying taxes on it.
That's right.
Somebody's got to pay the insurance on it.
That's right.
Somebody's got, how are they going to do all this on low to moderate income?
Mm-hmm.
Now, if you build them something and they don't maintain it, you basically just throw the money away. So, they have to have the ability to pay these taxes, because our taxes on a home's going to be more than taxes on a trailer. And the maintenance and upkeep of that is going to be more.
Yep.
You know, all that has to be taken into consideration. I'm just throwing that out there for the board, because if they ain't already got a home, then they probably can't afford all this stuff. So, you've got to make sure that they're able to afford to pay the taxes and the insurance and all this other stuff on a home when you build it.
They're definitely.
Depending on how much money you put into it. If you build a $100,000 home, your taxes are going to be up there. It's not going to be $100, I can assure you.
There's conflicting priorities of helping the poorest of the poor or the neediest of the neediest versus those who will be able to maintain it.
And keep it up.
Well, like, over in District Two area, we only have one rehab, one rehab, you know?
Tom, Harriet Beaches?
Uh-huh. Out there at Land O' Art, that's all we have. We've got so many other people that needs it, I'm telling you, all throughout the county, you know? You know, and that's the thing. We have got to do something to hit more people, not hit them, but I mean, to get to them, to get to them. I mean, because a lot of these people don't even know we're having these programs. And if they don't know, how can they file for them? But, you know, I'm not going to be here, but I'm going to be watching, and I'm going to want to see a lot more people helped than what was this last time. Now, 10's a good number, but I'd like for it to be 100 if we could do it, you know what I mean? And it would help us.
And people are learning that we're doing this program, because I get more and more calls, and I'll get with Mr.
Well, I have people. I have people that calls, but by the time they find out about it, then it's already taken us, so.
Right.
And then I have people that need it bad, that can't be helped, because they're just inside the city limits.
Yeah, that's another thing. That is a state requirement. It must be outside the city limits.
See, well, the deal is, everybody look, when they learn about the program, they could. But you've got, a program is a program. You've got to take it all the way. You can't just do the first phase and say, okay, we over.
That's right.
They just don't give you the key to a house and say, hey, you do. No, it, it's stuff come with it. I mean, just like you say, you've got to pay the taxes, you've got to pay this and another. And if they're not doing that, then you've got to go in there and be the bad guy, just like you were the good guy. I mean, and that way, the separation part in this is kind of breaking away, but you've got to, when they commit, you go all the way or you don't. I mean, if you, if we doing this, you don't do your part, then, you know, you can, you can end up with a problem.
Yeah.
That's what you've got to, that's just the way it is.
And we're talking about inside the city limits, Mr. Sanders. Well, cities have their ability to apply for this also.
Yeah.
Both municipalities and the county can apply for the same grant to help the people within, within the city limits.
The city of Appalachia Cola is considering applying for a housing grant.
Yeah, so, I mean, we need to make the city of Carabel aware of it. We need to make the city of Appalachia aware of it, so when people come to Mr. Lockley, his whole district is within the city limit.
Yeah.
So, this program ain't really helping him. So, we, we pretty much confine the ship monies to the, within the municipalities where they could help.
Well, and that's a heartbreaking thing, because, because we know everybody here.
Yeah.
And they want to know why somebody over here, or over there, or over there can get it, but they can't. And then I've got to stand up there and say, oh, you live in the city limits of Carabel, and that's the reason why, you know? That one's breaking my heart. I can't.
We tried to help. They wouldn't work on the trailer.
I know it, I know it.
They wouldn't work on the trailer.
We tried to help it. We tried to help them.
I know. They refused to work on the trailer.
I know.
And one other thing to be aware of is during this past grant, I mean, I did a whole lot of work on some of them, had them ready to go, and then they backed out. Or a few of them, you know, I sit down and explain it to them, do all the inspections, and then explain it to them again, and they say, no, we don't want that deferred payment loan. They, you know, they're afraid that their children are going to have some kind of a debt. They don't, and I always say, well, stop and think what they're going to inherit, you know? Otherwise, they're going to inherit something they need to tear down. This way, they would inherit something they could either move into, or rent out, or sell, or whatever. So, you know, it is not for everybody, but it's up to the board to decide if you want to apply for another housing grant. If you do, we can tweak the policy. We don't even need to revise the policy before the application is due. We can do it later, if, you know, if the grant's funded, but.
Pleasure of the board.
I'm going to make a motion that we go ahead and go through with it.
We have a motion on floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Massey, that we move forward with another housing CDBG grant application. Any other comment?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Just because I don't know, that's fine. This is for mobile homes, correct?
That is a local policy. It was the board's priority last time, because most other programs don't assist people in mobile homes. The Citizen Advisory Task Force recommendation was that prioritize mobile homes again. However, as the same was true last time, to use ship funds, you would have to at least do two or three houses in order to use $50,000 in ship funds. So, that was one of those things. In the last grant, because we could afford to drop our score through a grant amendment, we actually dropped the ship funds so we could do exclusively mobile homes. Now, but if we had, if we have to keep those points, then we'll have to do a few houses.
That was leading to my question, because knowing that it was potentially going to be a mobile home, use only for ship, already covers houses, how we were going to use $50,000, that was my question.
Yeah.
So, you answer.
My question was, why can't we help rehab a house?
You can.
In other words, if somebody's already got a house, or already paying the insurance, or already paying their taxes.
You can.
So, why can't we help them rehab a house?
You can.
You don't have to go out and build them a $115,000 house.
Right.
We can help them rehab a house.
Well, we.
Does that meet the ship compliance that you're talking about?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that was my question.
Rehab them for like $30,000 or something.
Yeah, I mean, to help the people outside that ship haven't been able to help. I mean, that was my thing.
That's actually one of your ship strategies, to rehab homes. You have that in your ship program.
And when you.
That's just the ship strategy.
Michael, when you're rehabbing something, you reach more people, like Commissioner Sanders was talking about, rather than us buying $115,000, $120,000 mobile homes and this and that. You can help more people if you're able to rehab. Now, some of this stuff is not able to be rehabbed, I understand that.
And that's the thing.
I understand that. Some people you can help, some people you can't, too.
Uh-huh.
But you've got to reach out and spread it more, as Commissioner Sanders said, across the county.
Mm-hmm.
There's two little people we helped over here in Appalachia Cola through that whole grant, other places we're getting new mobile homes. Well, that don't make me look too good, because nobody over here got no new mobile homes. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So, there's some people that got mobile homes over here that need to rehab, and as I spoke earlier, more people are coming out. I know people that's got a couple of different homes, elderly, will meet the qualifications, but the home needs to be rehabbed a little bit, you know? And I'm not opposed to helping somebody trying to help themselves. I mean, I'm not opposed to that, and we can hit, we can help more people if we don't go out and buy a brand-new mobile home for them. You buy a brand-new mobile home, you can help five people. If you can find people that we can help rehab a house, or rehab a mobile home, we can reach out and affect a lot more lives, basically.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what Commissioner Sanders was talking about. Commissioner Lockley, you had a comment?
Yeah, is there a requirement in there that you've got to buy so many new?
No, sir, no. There'll be a requirement that we do a minimum number of homes, and that when we do those, we have to use, like, if we're replacing windows, for example, they have to be Energy Star eligible windows. I mean, there's a lot of upgrades that we have to include, and the checklist of what you have to do is way greater than what the ship program would require.
Well, what you need to, what you could do now, if, I guess, what you're doing is, when you come to a situation where the trailer is too old and it's got to be replaced, that's what you're running into.
Yes, yes.
All right, now, what I'm asking is, to get your local contractors involved, when you do that, can you go to some of these contractors and ask them, say, for example, whatever that trailer cost? I don't know what the price is for a single double or whatever. It shouldn't be no doubles, period, I don't think. I don't know, I don't know what you got, man. What you should do, I mean, if you run into that situation, can you go to the local contractor and ask them, what can they, could they do anything for this amount?
I actually had a two-bedroom, one-bath plan that I've used in other localities. Now, that does not meet the needs of families a lot of times, but for, you know, one or two people, it works well. And I don't know if we could bring it in for the same price, but it would be a good home if we could.
I seen it done with the ship program, and they went in there, but there was in, when the state was doing them housing, and they got with the contractor, and they built three bedrooms and everything.
I've done three-twos, yeah.
And, they were cheaper. I mean, it was just a basic home.
Yeah.
You know, it wasn't nothing, you don't go out there and build them no, tell them a whole, you just build them a basic, three-bedroom home, bathroom.
I think we go right back, what, we all have to figure out, not just Debbie, is that, we go right back to the situation the chairman just talked about. Okay, so they have a mobile home now, can they afford the taxes on a stick-built house? That's, is that what you said, sir?
Well, a lot of them on fixed incomes, yeah. And if you're drawing $400, $500 a month, times 12 months, you're not going to be able to pay the insurance and keep the house up, and you're just not going to be able to do it. But that's, that needs to be something Ms. Debra takes into consideration.
And we tweak the policy that way, to.
Yeah, you know, it's just tough. I know it's tough, and we're talking about all this rehab, and the more rehab we do, the more people we can reach. That puts a lot more pressure on Ms. Debra to try to keep up with all these different projects, because you've got to close this grant out at some point. So, that's got to be taken into consideration, too, and I understand that. I mean, if you're doing $10,000 here and $10,000 there, by the time you do $700,000 worth, you've got projects going everywhere, and you're the project administrator. So, I understand some of the issues that you're having, and, but then you've got to, when you're looking at whether it's a mobile home replacement or a stick-built house, can these people afford to keep this stuff up? Can they, do they have the ability to pay the taxes and the insurance? Because if they can't, have we really helped them, or have we set them up for failure?
Exactly.
You know, can we help them, or are we setting them up for failure? And we want everybody to succeed, so these are some of the things a project administrator has to look at, or I think she should look at.
Excellent.
And again, like we were saying before about competing priorities, you know, some of the ones that you've personally discussed are the neediest of the needy in terms of their conditions. Well, that means you can't rehab it. So, do we go back and say, well, I'm sorry, we can't rehab it, and we can't do anything, because we're trying to have a maximum of, you know, let's say $40,000 a house, or whatever? Well, you know, you have to decide, are we going to say no replacements or not? Or are you going to say, yeah, we'll replace some and we'll rehab some? In this last one, we had five of each, so.
I mean, these are policy decisions that we can take care of later. Did we ever vote, Michael? I knew we had a motion and a second.
Can I ask a question before you vote? Okay, you said that, in the notes you sent to me, you said this is the first public hearing.
Yes.
Do we need to have a second public hearing about this?
Yes, yes. When we have the application prepared, we have to have, or a draft of it prepared. The thing about a housing grant, it's not, it's not as complicated as some of the others, so there isn't as much to review the second time around as there would be, like, if we were doing an infrastructure project, for example. So, the second public hearing, if you want to tweak the policy, we can then, or we can just put in an application with the policy we have now, and you have plenty of time to think about it later, and you, there are a lot of things in that policy that were purely local discretion.
And I understand that, and I agree with going ahead and putting that, because if we don't get funded, all these discussions that we're having here today and in the future doesn't mean anything.
Right.
So, I agree with putting in the application, let's see if we can get funded, and then we can tweak, and we can figure out where the board wants to go from there.
And what my recommendation be is, put it in for the minimum number of houses that we have to commit to. You can always do more, but, you know, you commit to the minimum, because you don't want to get penalized for not hitting your minimum.
Right.
And then use the policy we have now. It meets, as far as I know, it meets all the requirements. If it doesn't, I'll take a look at it and make sure. If it doesn't, I'll tell you, hey, we have to address, you know, whatever the point is. And then your second public hearing could be, here we go, we're off and running.
We do have a motion and a second to put in that application. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
All opposed? That motion carries? And do we have another discussion about the task force?
That was what I presented to you, their recommendation.
Okay.
A housing grant prioritizing mobile homes and committing $50,000 in ship funds.
Okay. And that was the motion in the second. Okay, thank you for coming in today.
So, we officially ended the public hearing?
Yes, we're done.
Madam Clerk?
I don't have a report this morning.
No reports from the clerk. Alan Pearce, store coordinator?
One, inform the board that Mark Carrington did submit the Armory Application to Triumph Board last week, and a copy of applications attached. Number two, board act approved my travel to Triumph Board meeting in Pensacola, which is on June 12th.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Sanders. I actually asked Alan to go to this particular meeting, so that's the reason he's asking for his travel and all. We do have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
All opposed? Motion carries?
And board act approve my travel to a special after meeting on Saturday, the Saturday, June 9th, on Algarve Point. After's holding a mediated workshop with residents to discuss funding options for the Algarve Point Road, and after's asked me to attend and make a presentation about the history of the road and where we are with the FEMA.
I move.
We have a motion on floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion?
Just, Alan, just let the other commissioners know, in the meantime, what's going to be discussed, down there, things that.
I'm going to do it right now, if you.
Oh, you want to do it?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
We do have a motion and a second.
We do have a motion in a second on the floor. All those in favor? All opposed? That motion carries?
All right, so they asked me this series of questions, and I'm not gonna read all the answers because it's over, right now, it's a rough draft, I've got five single, five pages, single spaced. So, I'm, but I'm gonna. I wanna read one to you because I, I wanna make sure that I represent to you all, that, that I represent to them, the, uh, you know, sort of the, the, the current policy of, of the board. And so the question was, you know, what's the county atti- what, what is the county's attitude about funding sources for, for whatever comes next as far as repairing the road? And this is what I, I plan to say, but I sort of maybe seek your guidance. Because damage to the Alligator Point Road has been so extensive and, and expensive. So much more expensive and extensive than any other road, you might think the county would find some sense aside for continuing road maintenance. The county does provide funds for standard road maintenance, but the county does not budget for the ravages of a hurricane. As long as road maintenance funding comes out of gas tax revenue, which it does, the county does not identify individual road segments for individual funding. Alligator Point Road is not treated any differently than any other county road. The Road Department, with County Commission direction, works on all county roads across the entire county. The problem is that the Alligator Point Road needs an extra amount of fun, an extra amount of work, and therefore, an extraordinary amount of funds. At this time, there is no extraordinary funding source for the road. I personally think there needs to be one, but that is my personal opinion. It is probably fair to say that if you all, I'm speaking to the Alligator Point community, if you all do not support special funds, then a special assessment will not be forced upon you. But without funds dedicated to maintaining the road, you will have to accept the effort you currently receive.
That's it.
That's pretty straightforward.
Did, uh, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Alan, oh, what, they sent you them questions?
Yes, sir.
Who, who sent them, please?
Well, well, I got them from both Jim McCoy and Alan Pfeifer, and I presume, I presume that they had a committee, but I don't know that.
Yeah, and I want him to go down there and address them and let them know how the, the board feels about it, because now that you see that. Uh, it's probably gonna be, um, the spring of two thousand nineteen, before anything gets done on that road, they need to know that. And they need to know that they're gonna be driving across what they've got, God forbid, any storm come. Until then. Just like we told them a year, year and a half ago, and when FEMA reimbursed us, we'll do, you know.
That's right. Another, the question I had was, what's, they said, what's FEMA's attitude towards Alligator Point and what's on the table now? And so I say, I hesitate to state FEMA's attitude towards Alligator Point because I don't know, but what is on the table now is, and this is some reiteration, but I just wanna say it again. Is a proposed three point two million dollar project that would rebuild the road and then add sheet pile revamp along a thousand feet of road that is currently damaged. It would do nothing east or west of that one thousand feet. If the construction cost came in at three point two million, then the county has to provide twelve and a half percent of that, which is exactly four hundred thousand dollars. The county has traditionally used the Ballpoint Trust Fund as the source of local match for projects in Alligator Point. There is some five hundred thousand dollars in trust fund now. The math is simple. If we had to pull out four hundred thousand dollars, that would only leave a hundred thousand dollars left in the trust fund. And part of that hundred thousand dollars is going to be used to meet our national Gulf Trail Boulevard. So you could essentially say the trust fund will be depleted if we had to meet our twelve and a half percent match of three point two million. The good news is that Governor Scott did give the count, did give the county a one-time partial waiver of a local match. He cut our match in half. So using the same three point two million dollar project, the county now only has to provide two hundred thousand dollars. So that will leave some two hundred thousand dollars still in the trust fund. And again, I'm speaking to Alligator Point. You all may decide that two hundred thousand dollars is enough of a cushion, and maybe it is. This is a decision you all need to be comfortable with. But, because if you do not want to accept an assessment, then I don't think the commission will impose one on you. Again, I'm putting it on them, but if, if they think they can live with the revenues that, that everybody else gets, so be it. But I, but ladies and gentlemen, I, you know, the reason I'm going down there is that I believe that road is, has extraordinary costs. And we have to recognize that, we need to deal with it. Otherwise, you know, they're gonna be unhappy all the time.
They've been unhappy.
But I, I'm offering them a solution.
I mean, I, I, I'm being serious. They've been unhappy. Whatever we do down there does not satisfy them. And, and I'm, I'm sorry, but that's all we can do. Because if we try to do something else, we're gonna be pleading the other part of the county.
Right, we're trying to treat exactly what.
And you can't do that. And it took, you know what, it took me, it took me fifteen years to realize that. You know what I mean? And I'm, I mean, I'm speaking to my heart here. But we can't do no more than what we've done. And I'm not gonna put this board, nor the people, in a financial burden for one problem in Franklin County. I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna do it as a commissioner. I don't know how the other commissioners feel about it. And if y'all feel different, that's fine. I mean, because we all agree to disagree. But we've got to do what we've got to do, and when you don't have anything to do it with, thank God that we have had the Ballpoint Trust Fund to fall back on all these years. Because we wouldn't have done, been able to do what we have done down there. So, I mean, I'm finally saying some of the things that needs to be said. And it needs to be said. And I'm, I'm telling you, um, you know, and it's like Commissioner Pierce said, said earlier, when he was talking about the hurricane. You got to remember, these peo- some of these people are not residents of Franklin County, you know? Or is every one of them a taxpayer? No, you know? Uh, do we protect taxpayers? We try to. But anyway, not for that.
It just seems to get more and more, every time something happens to that road, it takes longer.
It is.
Longer and longer to resolve.
Because the expenses are going up and up.
Yeah, and it just takes longer and longer and longer. It's taking what, what, we're gonna work on, three years?
Three years, three years.
Okay, well, the next time it gets messed up, it might take us six years to reach a resolution. I mean, it just keeps, seems like the, the timeline just keeps. Going further down the road till the next time it gets washed out. It, it may be six years before we ever get any resolution. Get the FEMA reimbursement.
If you'll remember, if you'll remember, we had tropical storm, uh, Debbie, um, um, Smokey, do you remember that? And it wasn't until after we had her main come through that we got funded, you know, reimbursed for that. Just this last week, we had a letter from a resident down there in Alligator Point. This, I'm glad I thought about it. Um, I would like to direct the county engineer, uh, with the board's pleasure, to, to, uh, go down there. And own the corner of these people's property. They're saying that the road is on their property. And I would like for the county engineer to go down and survey out the road, whoever, survey out the road. And when they do, I want to put up states, so we will know where our county right of way is.
Uh, 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 we're in the process of doing that anyway with, for the.
Are you in the process of doing it?
For the D E P permit. Uh, we're, we're surveying that, that part of the road, aren't we, a thousand feet? Uh, this is an intersection of Tom Robertson, yeah.
Yeah, that corner right there. Yeah. Um, and when you find out, let me know.
Well, I, 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 I disagree with the people. I think we are, I think we are, we've cut the corner over there. The problem is, they don't own the exact corner. The order district owns the exact corner. So we didn't really know where tha- that boundary line.
But they're saying.
And we might.
They're saying they own it. So, anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for letting me speak.
Yeah, keep saying it, getting further and further up. Anything else, Alan? Board have anything for Alan this morning?
Welcome home.
Welcome back. Next will be Mr. Michael Marone.
Debbie's no more storms?
Oh.
I'm leaving in August, so you go.
Oh, thanks. Uh, okay, Adam, one, my printed report is slightly different from the one you have on, on your, uh, packet. Uh, towards the end, not the beginning so much. I don't want the Weems update. Hopefully, this is probably be my, close to my last one, the way things are looking. Um, hell, are you. The Weems Board of Directors' regular meeting was on Thursday, May thirty first. A copy of the agenda, the financial reports, and agenda packet documentation is included in your packet. As part of the packet, there was a white paper from Stroud, Stroud Water Associates, Associates, entitled. High Cost of Governance Dysfunction in Community Hospital, which is a very interesting read. You gotta check. Read it out. I can print it out for you if you'd rather do it that way. Also, the meeting, the board passed a motion to reaffirm their interest in having the county authorized attorney Schuler to meet with Mr. Cannington. To discuss the pros and cons of establishing a five oh one C three to ma- manage the hospital. Among the other motions and discussions, there was board action to expedite the application process for the rural healthcare designations for Weems East Clinic. And a lot more information that you'll see in the minutes, and things that happen based on the packet.
Okay, let's, let's deal with item one, the, uh. Interest in having the county authorize attorney Schuler to meet with Mr. Cannington. So we need to take care of that.
Well, you had done it, uh, bless your attorney Schuler. I, I think you guys did it before.
I'm allergic.
We've already took that out.
I think you took that motion. They just wanted to reaffirm since there's a new CEO in place, that you continue, that he continues those discussions.
Yeah, pleasure to the board, continue on?
Yeah.
I've, I've already had my initial meeting with Mr. Cannington. Last week, we discussed five oh one C three issue. Uh, I've, I've given him some tasks to obtain some draft documents from this hospital association that, uh, he's aware of. Uh, then we also discussed the hospital auditor R F Q that we'll be dealing with later.
Okay.
So, good. Okay, item B. At the April twenty sixth Weems Board of Directors' meetings, it was stated that the H V A C unit for the Medical Records Department was not working. Because of its age, it was not worth repairing. And it was also the source of a leak above the area where the medical records are kept. The Weems Board approved the purchase of replacement unit, but I failed to add this to my May report. The situation got worse, and since there were three weeks instead of two between B L C C meetings, and a six-week window between ordering and delivery. I authorized Weems staff to proceed with ordering the fourteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollar replacement unit. Board action is needed to declare an emergency, waive the bid process, and ratify my action by approving the purchase of the fourteen. Thousand dollar replacement H V A C unit for the Medical Records Department.
Pleasure to the board.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion?
They gonna fix the leak?
That was the leak. All this time, that's where the leak was coming from. They didn't realize it. It was coming from the H D.
It wasn't draining out, it was draining in.
It was right above the records.
The drain hanging.
Yeah, right above the, the paper record.
Okay, we do have a motion in a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries?
Uh, item one C. Recently, I received a call from Mr. Roger Hall, who's the president of Sacred Heart Hospital on the Gulf, regarding their proposal to manage Weems. Mr. Hall stated that Sacred Heart agreed with the board of county commissioners that an emergency room department is necessary in Franklin County. Therefore, they will be submitting a new proposal to the county, which will include an emergency department. We should receive this proposal in forty-five to sixty days. That itself would be exciting to read because we, a whole nother discussion, including critical access. And tha- that's it for my Weems. If there was any other questions about, uh, Weems.
Why they ain't, they ain't said nothing but, they said we don't need the hospital. They ain't worried about what we say?
Uh, well, they worried about to know, because we kept, I told them pretty much that you guys were not backing off on an emergency room. So I guess that's why we're getting a new proposal. So, we'll see what they come up with, uh, commissioner. This is a lot more discussions to be had.
Yeah, I know.
That, that, a lot more. If there's no more Weems, uh, questions, uh, I'll move on to item number two. At your last meeting, the board authorized a thirty-day extension on the grant contract for phase two of the Fort Coombs Armory renovation project from the Division of Historic Resources. This extension was necessary to allow the manufacturer adequate time to build and install the door at the armory. Mr. Currenton received the contract amendment request that includes a six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollar adjustment to the contract amount. Which the board agreed to pay from the repair and maintenance budget line item at the February sixth meeting, and a new extension date of July thirtieth, twenty eighteen. Board action to authorize the chairman's signature on this contract amendment request.
Pleasure to the board.
I may. Sir.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion?
I'm with that, do go.
Well, the total price of the door, I have to check what it was, and I have, I have the minutes, I think I live at my desk. Where, we did this in, uh, February, sir, where we were, um, it was over the remaining amount of money for the grant, and it was this amount over. And the board agreed to pay that difference. But I can get the full price of the door to you, because it has to be made to exact specifications, you know.
Historic preservation, okay.
But I'll get that to you, sir.
Yeah, take it to how much gold it got in it.
How much gold? Okay.
It got in the door.
Checking the hinges for that. Yes, sir. Oh, you haven't voted? I'm sorry.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? That motion carries?
Item number three, due to advertising and other issues, the county is requesting a time extension on the Bay Shore Drive sidewalk project. The current agreement, the schedule to expire in June thirtieth, but the county is asking for an October eleventh expiration date. The contractor is proceeding rapidly, so if there are no unanticipated delays, the project should be completed by that date. Board action to authorize the chairman's signature on the request for a time extension.
Pleasure to the board. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley. Second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, please. Is there a reason why they're needing the extension?
Well, the C E I, the selection of the C E I, well, advertising and then the selection process from C E I delayed the start of the project. And that was one of the big reasons why we're asking for an extension. There are a couple of other issues also, but it's nothing to do with the contractor and the work.
Okay.
He's, he's moving along, but it took a long time to allow it to start.
He's definitely moving along better than some other contractors in our area. They're doing state projects.
Tell me about it. That's it?
Yep.
Okay. Did they vote?
They need to vote.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? That motion carries?
And Commissioner Massey's favorite project, the Mill Road paving project is nearly complete, but the recent rains can possibly delay the striping of the road. The expiration date on the grant is June thirtieth. Mr. Currenton recommends asking the Department of Transportation for a thirty-day time extension on the grant. To allow the completion of the project and all necessary paperwork. Board action to authorize the chairman's signature on the request for time extension letter.
It's, uh, it's striped over there.
I don't know if they have to go back and add another striping or not, Commissioner, out.
That's a temporary stripe.
Yeah, they think that's a temporary stripe, yes, sir.
They got all the asphalt cured, thirty days, and these thirty days, forty-four.
It'll wash away.
And because of the rain, they kind of slow down.
I wonder, because I, I know I ride by it every day and.
Pleasure to the board.
I may.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? That motion carries?
All right. Item five. Attached to your package is an update from Mr. Jim Oskowitz of F D E P on the county's nerd of projects. I stated in the email, there's a slight delay at Indian Creek Boat Ramp due to recent rainfall. But the project should be completed by the end of this month. I'm waiting for Commissioner Jones to jump up.
Oh, no, I'm.
Five B. Construction is on schedule at the East Point Fishing Pier restroom project, and there's, there's some changes in this one from your iPad version. Which should be completed on August first. However, the contractor has requested a change order for some additional painting that would extend the project one week. What is not stated in the email is that the county is in the process of paying East Point Water and Sewer District, which I think you did this morning when you approved the bill list. For water connection fees for the East Point Fishing Pier restroom. Once the fees have been paid, North Florida Construction will coordinate with East Point Water and Sewer District on setting, on the setting of the meter. Okay, here we go. Five C. There've been quite a few unanticipated issues at Lombardi's, which they call Waterfront Park Project. Such as septic, structural, and the removal of a buried gas, gas diesel storage tank. That has caused significant delays to complete this project. The project's most recent completion date is at the end of August. However, another structural issue might push the project completion date towards the end of September. Once the demolition phase is completed, which should be within the next week or two, residents will be allowed to access the boat ramp and the small fishing observation piers.
Mike, we've been here in this week or two for the last two months.
I know.
Yes, please.
They need to get that cleaned up out there. I see the temporary fencing is separating the picnic area and the historic, uh. Maritime his- historic display center. But they need to move on with this, uh, I'm catching a lot of grief about people not being able to. Launch their boats or access the property. Now, they need to get through with this, this, uh. Demolition and get that stuff hauled off the site and open up back, that boat ramp back up. I mean, this has been going on way too long, and I know there's problems, and I understand that, and we're gonna work through those problems. But we need to get our boat ramp open back up for these people.
Yes.
I mean, that, you know, and if he comes back down for another meeting, I wanna be informed of it, and I wanna meet with Mr. Oskowitz to figure out where we at. And, and see if we can get some answers for the people that keep asking me questions.
Actually, he's scheduled to attend tomorrow, come to a meeting tomorrow and do some inspections, so I'm gonna set up meetings for both you, sir, and for Commissioner Jones. So he can give you, uh, some personal updates, if I would, uh, of, of these projects and where we are. And not to. And not to encourage Mr. Pierce to stand up here and speak about the displeasure, but a lot of this has to do because the state now runs the administration of these, these projects. The county doesn't anymore. So whereas you guys could raise cane with us, and then we would call the contractor and say, look, you gotta do something here.
Hands are kind of tied, but they need to understand the significance of, you know, we got this money to do this project because of loss of use through the BPO, it's called Deepwater Horizon, where the public still can't use, we're still at a loss of use. You know, and.
And I know you catching.
And the, and the pressure is mounting, the pressure is mounting, and I'd like to meet with him tomorrow and get some answers on something.
You know that, that's some of the, some of them people lunch down there, well, they would.
Well, you guys, businessmen lunch down there, you flound them, I mean, a lot of people lunch down there.
We already, the people, they know it's a, there's a poor area that people not making no money, but they keeping them out the water and holding them up to go to work, because you got, they ain't got one, one more, one or two more place down there, unless they go way out at lunch. It's an economic disaster.
Hardship, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I, I was gonna say, just to add to some of the discussion here this morning, from the people I know that are involved and in and about around the areas in East Point, especially with Indian Creek, this project initially was supposed to start in last November. It's a single boat ramp in a small creek.
It's a park space.
And it's still being, you know what I mean? And, uh, but yeah, it's, uh, at the same time, like, like the chairman said, it was done for loss of use, but it's still loss of use. So I don't know how this is fixing the problem, but I would be very interested in, uh, talking to Mr. Oskowitz myself also.
Okay, I'll make that happen tomorrow, Commissioner. And that was the last sentence of that item. And, and item number six, inform the board that Monumental Fabrication will be removing and replacing with DOT eight sixty-style railing, the damaged railing on Bluff Road. The finance office has been contacted by the state attorney's office to discuss reimbursement to the county for the damages to the railing, which, which, which I mean by that is, what I mean by that is, whatever the insurance doesn't cover, the state attorney will set up in the plea deal that the person that actually did the damage has to cover the balance, so the county gets fully refunded for it. So that's why I'm gonna say that. And one more thing I didn't write down in having my report, just to let you know, I would reschedule the sheriff to come talk to you about his budget, uh, at, at the next meeting, so I'll put that on the agenda, okay? And that's my report.
Any board members got anything for Mr. Maroon?
I just got one thing, I meant to bring it up in Allen's report because he restored, but I'll bring it up underneath Michael's, then I can get it through. The Gulp Consortium had their meeting on May seventeenth in Panama City, and we approved the SEP, the static expenditure plan. It got sent to the governor. The governor is supposed to be looking at it, uh, and possibly approving it sometime late summer, somewhere around August. They said that if it keeps on the track that it's going, that probably the funds would start trickling down about March of, or April of next year. And that's about when you can expect it. And at that time, uh, Ms. Sarah Commander of Walton County brought up that she is no longer gonna run for office. She's retiring too. And of, of course, I let her know that I was retiring, and, um, but they said, and this is a good thing for you all, they said, once the static expenditure plan is approved and, and gone to the council, the governor council and all that, that probably more than likely you wouldn't have, but like quarterly meetings. And we're, they're trying to figure out, because that's one of the things, I brought it, they're trying to figure out how they can have the meetings, you know, and, and they did pretty good with, um, phone, you know, over the phone and stuff, phone conferences and stuff, instead of actually having to be there, you know, during that, so they're working on that, so it's a good thing. But I just wanted to let y'all know, the next meeting of the consortium will be down at our annual conference in Orlando, the week of the twenty-sixth, but, but it's a good thing. One of the projects that was in there, and they, they actually took all the twenty-three counties and put up, you know, basically the projects in there, and our project for six point six million dollars, I think, was all the dredging in the county that we wanted done, so it's in there. And, uh, the EOC is in there. The EOC is something like a twenty-five percent, some, some number in there, but anyway, uh, it's all in there. But I wanted to let the board know that, because I know the people are anxious to do the dredging and stuff, but it's in there. So, you know, we're looking at it to be sometime in the spring that maybe some of these projects can get going. But that's a good thing.
No money have arrived out of none of them yet?
Do what?
Have any money come anyway yet? Not in Apple, not in Franklin County.
Uh-uh, not, not consortium, uh-uh, not, uh-uh, no. Now, you got the other ones, the Nerdahs and the Nipwits and all that, you got those projects, but nothing from the consortium side.
Actually, no, I don't think any counties have, even though we haven't finished our multi-year plan for our store money, Commissioner, I don't think any county, even counties that have finished it, they still have got money out of the truck coming. The process has just come down.
It is. But that's a big move to, to send that expenditure plan in.
Does the board have anything else from Mr. Maroon?
Yeah, I, I wanna ask him a question.
All right.
Mike, I want to check on, I'm making a motion that we get some shit, going to Florida Association of County meeting again, and we be down there the only one without a name tag, paper name tag. So I'm gonna make a motion that we get some shit.
I second your motion, I already owned three of them, sir.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries.
I'll get your sizes tomorrow, and I'll start working on that.
Anything else from Mr. Maroon? Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have the CPA proposals for publication that I want the board to, if y'all had any discussion with me, that, that y'all would let me know what questions you have. If you have no questions, then I would request a motion to approve publication.
We go, well, the committee's gonna handle all that, right?
That is correct, but I did not want to publish.
Publish in a time.
In, in the newspaper without getting the board's approval and input. Technically, legally, uh, actually, the review committee's the one who's going to make the final approval.
I may.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries.
Now, Commissioners, I have this scheduled for first publication in the newspaper, that's by school of times, this Thursday. Do you want me to advertise in any other form, or is that sufficient?
I think, I think that's good.
Okay, that's fine. I had also made a recommendation that in addition to the minimum number of committee members, that you would also appoint Mr. Cannington to the review committee, because there is the hospital RFQ that, that will need to be reviewed, and I think the committee would benefit from his input, so.
Pleasure to the board.
I don't have no problem, second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries also.
And does the board want to now select your representative on the review committee, or do you want to defer that to a future date? You do have some time to make that.
Do we have to have one?
Yes, ma'am, the, the committee has to consist of one county commissioner.
We can do it next meeting, huh?
Let's do it.
You gotta, you gotta advertise thirty days?
I've got it set to advertise for thirty days.
Yeah, we can do it at the next meeting.
That is correct. Uh, and then the other issue is, um, the resolution of a code violation at lot twenty-six, Shell Harbor subdivision on St. George Island. If you recall, a few months back, there was an individual who went through the process of applying for a permit to construct a dock through the county process, application process. The, the county commission gave permission for the construction of the dock back in two thousand thirteen, I believe, but from that point forward, no, uh, construction permits were actually pulled. The version of the story I got is that the homeowner thought that the contractors were pulling all of the, the construction permits, but in fact, no permits were, uh, pulled either for the construction of the dock, the construction of the boardwalk, the installation of lights, electricity, water, a shed, a screened-in, uh, area.
Got mine.
And, and the board had directed me to do an enforcement action on that. I, I sent a letter to the property owner. She hired Mr. Dan Garlic, uh, who did timely respond and, and within the thirty-day period that I had requested a response to be given. He has offered a resolution, uh, for that code violation. I sent his resolution over to, uh, Mr. Mark Carrington and also Ms. Amy Hamm for their review and consideration, and they have both jointly returned to me a recommendation that the county accept this, uh, resolution. I spoke with Commissioner Jones, he's also, uh, does not have any objection to moving forward with this resolution. And let me just, for the record, read you generally what we're looking at. They would pay a double permit fee for the construction that was done without a permit for the dock, the boardwalk, and the electric service. And by implication, what that means is the dock, the boardwalk, and the electric service would remain in place. The shed and the porch would be placed as a wheeled trailer, so that it's mobile and, and, and can be relocated and removed from, from the property. And the deck, although not specifically listed in the complaint, is in the critical habitat zone, and the deck will be removed and relocated landward and centered on the boardwalk outside of your critical habitat zone. Uh, I don't see any reason, you know, given the fact that Mr. Carrington and Ms. Kelly have recommended approval of this resolution, I don't find anything that's objectionable to this resolution. And, uh, my recommendation is the board accept this and allow us to move forward and complete this enforcement action.
Can I ask a question before we move on on this? Mr. Schuler, on the letter that was sent, refer back to it for me, explain something to me.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm gonna read it out, it'll be okay for me to read it out, right?
Yes, ma'am, it's public, correct.
It says, regarding timing, Mrs. Bleeker is experiencing some personal hardships, but will consent to the above offer by May thirty-four, uh, thirty-first if the county concurs with it. I mean, this is the fifth of June, and the board's just seeing it. You see what I'm saying?
That, that's correct, that's correct. I did not bring it to your attention at the May, your second meeting in May. I don't think there's going to be a problem because they're, we've got, we're sitting in the catbird seat, and we're the cat and they're the bird, so they're going to agree to this, or the, the enforcement action could be much worse.
But you know I'm gonna look at something like that, but.
The double permit fee is a standard fee we charge other people.
Do what?
The, the double permit fee is a standard fee we charge anybody who builds that.
Okay, okay, no problem, yeah. I just wanted to make sure that we get the date and stuff right. So she's gonna concur with this?
Yes.
Her representative's in the audience, and he said yes.
Okay.
Pleasure to the board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries.
I don't have anything further for the board, Mr. Chairman.
Does the board have anything for Mr. Schuler?
You got mine taken care of.
We are down to commissioner comments? There being no commissioner comments?
I wondered what the board was gonna do about the Mr. Jackal overpayment that's owed us.
Mr. Schuler, could you give us?
Probably gonna have a report on that this morning.
Oh, no, I was originally scheduled to meet with Ms. Jackal, uh, this afternoon at two o'clock, and she called me yesterday morning to bring the, uh, or have the meeting yesterday afternoon at four o'clock. Instead, I did meet with her at four o'clock. I cannot report to you that there is a satisfactory resolution at this point, but I, I do think the progress is being made, and the documents that she provided to me yesterday at four, I believe that she does not have any disagreement with the total amount of the overpayment that was calculated by the CPA. And we're at the end of the process of having the CPA confirm and look at those numbers that she presented to me yesterday, and we'll be moving forward with some final action by this Friday of this week, to give her a deadline that says that there is no real material disagreement as to the amount that's owed, in my opinion, and that she can pay it or not pay it by a stated deadline, and if she doesn't, the board has already given me authority to move forward with, with enforcement action if it becomes necessary.
That's what I was thinking, say, if you don't come to some kind of agreement Friday. You said you've meeting again Friday, or?
No, I'm going to send out a, a final letter on Friday. Supposed to be getting a response from the CPA by Wednesday of this week, and then I will be communicating with her on Friday, and at that point, sending out, uh, a final demand letter that, that moves forward. Now, how that ends up getting resolved, that's her choice, so.
It's no reflection on nothing or nobody, but we need to move forward on this, because this has been since two thousand sixteen.
Well, didn't you say she didn't have any, uh?
Problem with it.
Any problem, I mean, she, not that she owed this money.
I wouldn't say that she doesn't have a problem with it, I'm saying that I don't think that she has any material facts that would, would conclude that the balance our CPA has calculated is materially different than the number that, that I think she concedes is an overpayment. What she does not, I think, concede is that there was, uh, you know, any wrongdoing on her part. She had an explanation of how it's all calculated and things of that nature. It's that explanation that I want the CPA to look at. I feel like I already know what the answer is, but, uh, there's a process to go through, and we have to go through our CPAs to, to confirm that, you know, what the lawyer thinks is correct is in fact correct.
So what, so where we, how, how do we get our money back?
Well, it's either pay voluntarily, or we go to court.
Well, tell her, tell Commissioner Jackal that she ain't got no problem with it, send us a check.
Or, or.
Exactly, I, I would not represent the board of the public, she has no problem with that, but it's never my intention.
Do we get our attorney's fees back out and stuff?
No, sir, there's no statutory basis for getting attorney's fees back out. But I mean, it's less than four thousand dollars, you're talking a small claims case. You'd have to pay a filing fee and go before the county judge, I mean, that's just the way it would work.
I'm, I'm on, just say this. I never saw a case like this before, because in the past, there has been constitutional officers that has realized, uh, former tax collector was one, uh, that there was an overpayment. Hey, he came right in there, he wrote the check, that was it. I don't know why it's taken so long to figure this out, but you need to give Ms. Jackal a date and a final date to come up with the money, and if not, take her to court.
That's correct.
That, that is. That's action on Friday.
That cannot be tolerated. She was a constitutional officer, just like me, just like any other of us, just like the clerk, and we have a duty to do what's right. And if you've got a CPA saying, hey, you got overpaid this amount of money, you need to pay it back and don't question it. I mean, you know, it's sort of like, you gotta pick your battles, because if you don't pick your battles, you're gonna ultimately lose the war. That's the way it is. I mean, and, and, and I have to say, in the pub, in, in the court of public opinion, I wonder what's being said. That's all I'll leave that to.
I agree with you, Commissioner, and I'll say, I'm not sure I agree with Mr. Schuler on the outcome, because I, I believe if any of us owed money, we would be having a criminal investigation on us.
Exactly.
If it wasn't paid back soon as something was, well, this has been going on for at least six months or more.
I mean, Johnny, it's gonna, might be, uh, Mr. Schuler, it's gonna get straightened out. We don't want the commission to look like we're doing, packing no favors, and like, let, let's get it on over.
I never did it myself.
Any other commissioner comments? Meeting adjourned.